... to the off of vibrate position and also please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T, U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Counselwoman Toles?
Here.
Councilwoman Williams?
Here.
Worthy?
Here.
Back?
Here.
Wilson?
Here.
Councilman Cannon is absent today. And Councilman Reed?
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilman Williams to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you for the opportunity to convene here today. Lord God, we thank you for all of those in attendance. Father, we thank you for another blessed day. We thank you for this beautiful fall weather, Father God, and we thank you for the opportunities that exist, Father, for us to be perfect in your sight, Father God. Lord God, we ask that you will continue to bless those that are in decision-making capacities, Father, to operate with a pure heart and a pure spirit, Father God. Father God, we ask that you will continue to bless this great city, Father God. Continue to allow love, Father God, to rise up and be mighty in the midst of all that we do, Father God, and through it all, we will give you the glory, the honor, and the praise, for it's in Jesus' name we ask it all. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, we'll have our update from the EMA, and Mr. Mark Golden will give us an update.
Good morning.
It's good to see you all again. It's been a while. The most staggering thing today is our rate of infection among the over-65 group in the state. But I'll get to that in a moment. Edgewall County is up very slightly. Today's count in the county is 4,057. That's total cases. The total deaths is 49. And that's for Edgewall County. Statewide, we're looking at almost 175,000 cases and 2,800 deaths. We're averaging 26.5 new cases every seven days in Edgewall County. And we've passed the 4,000 mark, of course. That brings our rate of infection up to 12.6 percent. That means 12.6 percent of people that live in Edgewall County have been diagnosed with We were on a downward trend for two weeks, and we're now coming back up on the upswing a little bit. And that could be just attributed to several things. Lifestyle changes. Seems that people are trying to get out more than they used to. There's more mass gatherings that are planned now and happening. So that's part of the problem. It's not exactly the problem, but the problem is, well, it goes deeper than just that. It goes deeper than just a gathering. We're back in the Health Department high category. Some of the things that, or the numbers that mean, that are of great significance is that in the 24 to 49 age group, that's 38.12 percent of the cases in the state. That's the highest percentage of cases in the whole state. And I'm sure the numbers would be similar here in Edgewall County. Only 4.7 percent of that age group have died because of COVID-19. In the over-65 age group, those only account for 16.76 percent of cases in Alabama. But of that age group, 77.3 percent of those people have died.
Wow.
Of the entire deaths of Alabama and the whole state, of 2,805 deaths attributed to COVID-19, according to the numbers, and if I've done the math right, 2,168 of those deaths were people over 65 years of age. So as we've suspected all along and been told all along, COVID-19 can take anyone, but anyone in the 65 and older group is especially vulnerable to this. So we would encourage you to try to take care of people in your district and make sure they're getting the word out that this is still not over. With Halloween coming, there's going to be a lot of, a lot of things going on, and that's going to be a big concern. The usual safety tips about COVID-19 should apply to Halloween. Of course, you know, try not to line up and social distance and wear a mask. Don't wear a mask under a mask. It makes it harder to breathe. Somehow, you could try to, might try to incorporate this type of mask into a Halloween costume. So, without drawing on it with toxic markers. Just an idea. Any questions?
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Are we back into the high category?
Yes, sir, we are back in the high category. And that's because of our, because we're trending upwards and our rate of infection has increased. And the daily average, or the seven-day average is 26.5 cases per day, is where we're at. Now, I don't know if that, and I don't know if those categories work on a sliding scale or if there's a set number that we have to go above before that kicks you into the next category. I'm not clear on that.
Can I just review these numbers to make sure that I didn't misunderstand?
Yes, sir.
So 24 to 49-year-olds represent almost 40 percent of cases?
Yes, sir, 38.12 percent of statewide cases.
And, but their death rate is what?
4.7 percent.
Wow. But if you're 65 or older and you get a 77 percent death rate?
Yes, sir. Six, only 16.76 percent of statewide cases are over 65.
So basically...
Yeah, 77 percent of those have died.
So basically, 24 to 49-year-olds are contracting this stuff, not dying from it, but spreading it, and if you're 65 or older and you get it, you got a three in four chance of dying from it.
That is a possibility, yes.
Wow.
It is possible that, for lack of a better, for lack of a better term, that the young folks are killing the old folks.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at.
Not directly, but indirectly, but, and it's not intentional, of course.
I thought we was turning the corner on this.
I'm a mask wearer.
Well, that's what somebody said.
We, we have turned, and we will continue to turn, and it will go up and down until at a time where things are somewhat normal. But this may be the new normal for a while, that we're up and down and up and down and up and down. Anyone else? Thank you. All right, thank you. Y'all have a great day.
I'll put a little emphasis on that. I felt real good this morning when I got up and came down here. But after hearing that news and Jason rubbing it in, I'm getting sick already.
I agree with you.
I've been feeling kind of bad.
I'm wearing my mask.
I guarantee you, it's important. I'm not, I'm making light really to myself, but it is important that we do what EMA says and the governor. Doesn't make me feel any better at my age, but...
Yeah.
Yeah, Councilman Reed, I'll, I mean, I'll echo that. I do appreciate the EMA each week for sharing just the facts and the data.
I agree with you.
Yeah, and, and so, I mean, you hear me say that a lot, but I think it's important. We, we get caught off, caught off on, we get caught up in these emotional discussions about masks and whether or not they work, and, you know, you can debate that all day, you know, whether or not masks work, but, but at the end of the day, you know, there's some things that are, that are pretty clear in that data that was just shared. That's not, that's not emotional, that's facts. Those are, those are actual facts. And what's clear, and I've said this a number of times before, and I'll say it again, you know, you can debate treatment, you can debate who's infectious, you can debate, you know, a lot of those things, but what's not debatable is this is a very dangerous, very highly infectious disease that is killing the older ones at a higher clip than it is most people. It is a disease that its, its whole intent is to attack the lungs. That's its whole intent. And the way that it gets to the lungs is through the nose and mouth. You can't debate those. I don't care where you are with masks, you can't debate those facts. So continue to argue about whether you want to wear a mask or not, but this is a respiratory disease that is deadly, and really deadly for people that are over age 60. So again, I, you know, you know, the social media will probably blow up today about, you know, those comments, but I don't care. Wear your mask because it's not just for you, it's for the people that you love that are over 60, that are in that category. That's why I wear a mask. So, so thank you again for the data.
If I could add something to that, to quote Josh Tanner at the office, if the masks don't work, what have we lost by wearing them? If they work, what have we gained?
It's kind of like what my pastor told me, God bless him, what my pastor told me about living right and following Christ. What have I lost if I die and there is no heaven or hell? What have I lost? I've just spent my entire life living right. So you haven't lost a thing. So, so what I choose to do is take, is go with the odds, and I live right. You live right, and I don't worry about that. So the same thing fits here, I think. I think you wear, wear the mask, what have you lost? You've inconvenienced yourself to save the life of a number of people that you could have possibly infected.
And if it's not real, then ask some of the family members who have lost someone. You know, people say that it's not real, but ask those families. So it's, it's, it's serious, and I, and I know what has happened, it's put a gloom over this meeting, but facts are facts, and we just have to live with those facts and do what, do what's right. That's, that's the main thing. People have a hard time of doing what's right, and they don't like you when you say, "Do what's right," but do what's right. Thank you.
We shouldn't let politics rule this.
Dominate.
Dominate this. This should be about the doctors and what they're saying. I was in a meeting the other day, and we told a guy that, you have to have a mask on to be in this meeting. You know, he got up and walked out?
That's his problem.
Out of about 30 people in that room, he got up and walked out. But people believe what they believe, and ain't nothing you can say to change their mind. Because we've been at this for, as long as this virus been here, talking about wearing masks, and people still just don't believe anything you say about wearing this mask. So it's up to them. But you have a right, if you want to, not to wear that mask, but whether your rights start infringing on my rights to live, then I have a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Y'all have a great day.
Yeah, we look for you to come back next week with some good news.
I can assure you, someone from the EMA will be here next week. Now, I don't know if it's good news or bad news, but somebody will be here.
All right, thank you. Thank you again.
Madam President, I'll just add, you know, to Councilman Reed's point, just a point of levity. There's a movie that's been out a while. It's called Idiocracy. If you hadn't seen it, you should watch it. It's a good, good comic relief. And it's basically, the theme of the movie is about society just kind of getting so dumb that they forget how to grow food. If you, the young lady shaking her head, the society gets so dumb until they forget how to grow food. They forget the importance of water. And honestly, sometimes when I look at what we're doing right now as a response, in response to this, this pandemic, that movie just keeps popping in my head because we're just really taking, we, we're discarding science and data and the things that have helped us for years be one of the best problem-solving nations in the world. We're just throwing it away and going with our emotional gut. Trust me, I trust science, data, and information more than I do people's guts. So, you know, let's, let's not, let's not get away from that. Let's not get away from that. I'm sorry.
Okay, we'll continue with our agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and council meeting held on October the 13th.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye. Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payments of accounts for the week of October the 9th through the 15th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Proclamation?
Yes.
We got one.
I think we have a couple of members from the Pilot Club are here. Anybody? Would you like to come up? I got my mask on, stand close by. Whereas in 1921, a group of civic-minded business leaders established an international service organization in Macon, Georgia. The founding members combined their diverse talents and friendship and service to improve the quality of life in communities throughout the world. Whereas Pilot International is comprised of almost 400 clubs and over 8,000 members worldwide, and is committed to the service in areas of youth development and leadership, brain safety and fitness, caring for families in times of need. Whereas members of Pilot International strive to further the organization's humanitarian efforts through scholarships and grants to support research, education, and community caregiving programs. Whereas Pilot International foundation partners with Safe Kids Worldwide, Care International, Project Life Saver, and other respected organizations to promote awareness of injury prevention and to care for those in need the most. Whereas the Pilot Club of Gaston partners with the Edgewall County Sheriff's Department on Project Life Saver, saving, serving 24 families with tracking devices in case of emergency. Whereas the Pilot Club of Gaston serves citizens in the, at the Snergo Center, DSCU for developmentally disabled adults, residents of five group homes around Edgewall County at Circle of Friends, and residents of Coosawattie Nursing Home. Whereas Pilot Club throughout the world dedicates to meeting the needs of their communities through volunteerism. Pilot International fosters volunteerism in more than 8,000 young people worldwide through the sponsorship of anchor clubs. Whereas the Hoax Bluff High School Anchor Club sponsored the Pilot Club of Gaston has received awards for their accomplishments in Alabama District and for Pilot International. Whereas members of the Pilot Club of Gaston and the Hoax Bluff Anchor Club have been involved with the camp sponsoring campers and working with campers for survivors of traumatic brain injury at Camp Aska in Jackson's Gap, Alabama each year in, since its beginning. Whereas the Pilot Club of Gaston received its charter from Pilot International in October 1936, making this 84-year-old continuous service community of Edgewall County. Therefore, it is fitting the achievements and contributions of this worthwhile organization. Its clubs, its members should be recognized on their anniversary by proclaiming October 20th, 2020, as Pilot Club of Gaston and Pilot International Founder's Day. Would one of y'all like to say something about this?
Thank you, Mayor Guyton. I have with me today Quincy Reeves, and she represents the Executive Board of the Hoax Bluff High School Anchor Club. There are a lot of things that our pilots have not been able to do this year because most of our projects are hands-on. We are finding other ways to help, and of course, we still have donations to Project Life Saver and buying new bracelets for clients, and we're, we're trying to keep our club together during this hard time. And the Anchor Club has been very helpful in making sure that the police department have gotten some treats, and they know they're appreciated for everything that they do, and they're working on a bag, bear in a bag project, so that if a policeman encounters a problem with a little child, they can be comforted with a little bear. They are working with Sleep in Heavenly Peace and have donated hundreds of pillows and pillowcases, and they've even helped build beds. So we're very proud of our anchors. We need them, they keep us going. So thank you very much for the recognition, we appreciate it.
Thank y'all for what you do, and hopefully, this will, word will get around, it's on 99, and maybe it'll be in a newspaper too, but the things, people, there's so many good things people like y'all do that nobody ever knows what happens, and we appreciate what y'all do, absolutely.
Thank you so much.
Our next item, we have no unfinished business today. Our, our next item is, this is the time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution approving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license, Fraggot Harry LLC, doing business as Marathon located at 1701 South 11th Street in District 5, has applied for a retail beer and table wine license, off-premise only. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone speaking favor?
The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
We have one no. Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on an abatement of nuisance on property located at 114 Pioneer Street in District 1. This is James Wolfe, being the last known owner. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution? Okay, if you'll come around to the podium and give your name and address, please.
My name is Michael Paul Wolfe. My father had passed, James passed. I live at 114 Pioneer. I moved here from Buffalo, New York to take care of my father's affairs, and the executor of his estate, standing right now. I've been cleaning, my father was a hoarder. He was 80. I have a lot of work, I understand that. I've been going through the court systems, through your county, because I can't just, I have five siblings, brothers and sisters, that I have to tell everything to and appoint everything to. I can't just do everything. I hired Clark Hall, an attorney, to represent me in magistrate court to have this all finalized through my father's estate. He didn't have a will, so my sisters took what they wanted and left me and my brothers with this house. So I'm cleaning it up. I have to go to your tax office to pay the bill, the tax bills, but I didn't even know that he had owed taxes or anything, so it's a slow but sure process.
So you have, you did say you have other siblings. How, how many are there?
There's five of us living.
It's five, it's five of you all. So who has, just, you're the one that's living in the house, right?
Yes.
Okay, and are your siblings nearby, or are they living here in Gaston?
My, James Junior lives in Chicago. Patricia lives in Tens, I, they're all spread around the state.
Oh, okay, so I guess I, I'm trying to get to, so you're paying taxes on it?
I'm paying everything. I had to pay $500 electric bill, water bill, I had to pay, I'm paying all this out of my pocket since I've been here.
Yeah, have you talked to anybody in the, I'm sure when the letter came, okay, did you talk to anybody in the building department, in the nuisance abatement department? You haven't talked to them?
I don't even know where it is. I'm, I'm from Buffalo, New York. I, I don't, I'm learning as I go here.
Okay, well, let, let me hear from our building department, nuisance person first, and then we'll go from there as to what we decide as far as the house is concerned.
All right, because, I mean, I'm a lon, I mean, I thought I had all kinds of crap in the back, sorry, in the backyard. I mean, people that were born in the 1940s didn't throw anything out, they used it for some, something else. Well, I believe in getting a dumpster, and it took me a month to clean out two rooms, the living room and the dining room, in a two-bedroom house. That's, he had a lot of...
Well, let, let, okay, well, just, you know, don't leave, just stay, and, okay, is there anyone to speak in favor?
Madam President, I'm Brian Harbison with the Building Department. This case involves trash and debris, it's not the house. We filed this case in September of 2019, over a year ago. We've been to court once. As you can tell in the pictures, there's a great abundance of trash scattered around the yard. We need a resolution to go on the property and clean it up. Thank you.
Okay, would you come back? Okay, our building, Mr. Harbison said that it's basically debris and stuff on the outside. How long can it take you to clean this up?
I took care of it. If I had my phone, I could show you the pictures of it. I even built a brick flower bed in the front yard.
So you've cleaned it up from, from the pictures of what we just saw?
Yes. Oh, yeah. Yeah, I cleaned all that up. He said September of last year, I didn't get here until April of this year. I cleaned up the whole, the whole front yard. The whole front yard, the side yard, and half the backyard. My father had a car buried in there. I didn't even know there was a car back there. I'd been walking on it for a month. I mean, I fully understand what they're saying about that, believe me.
And we're not laughing at you, we just...
Oh, no, I'm kidding. Believe me, I live in, I, I live there, I know.
Well, what I, what I'll do is, I'll, I will table this for 30 days, and I'll, and I'll, I'll ask Mr. Harbison if he can get someone before we have our next meeting.
Yeah, they can go and take the pictures.
In the next 30 days, to make sure that it's cleaned up. If not, then we'll, we'll pass this, that we'll have to come on the property and clean it up, and then that will be a lien on you.
Oh, I understand.
So I'll give you 30 days, and we'll check it out.
Okay. I was gonna say, they could have somebody over there right now, and they could check it out. I mean, I understand, when I got there, it was, I had two dumpsters. That was just outside.
All right, then, well, thank you. We'll, we'll table this. So I, I asked for a motion to table this for 30 days.
Motion.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to table for 30 days.
Okay. All right. Our next public hearing is a resolution or an abatement of nuisance on property at 101 Brentwood Drive in District 2. Tamika Cunningham, HB Adrian Cunningham, and Mortgage in favor of Long Beach Mortgage Company being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in June of 2019. There was a building permit taken out nine days after that. There have been no improvements, no action taken on that permit. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. Thank you.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution awarding abatement of nuisance on property located at 812 Hilliard Street in District 3. George Thomas Jr. and Lucille Thomas being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, based on improvements, we're asking this case to be table for 30 days.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Go along with the building department, ask for a 30-day table, please.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 30 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 30 days.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 806 Wawana Street in District 3, State of Alabama being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Does anyone want to speak in favor?
Madam President, this case involves state-owned property. We started the process in November of last year. Involves a dead tree. We need a resolution just to go on the property and remove this.
What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to adopt. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 2001 Broadway Street in District 5. Thomas Baloo, Deborah Baloo, and Jeff Bynum being the last known owners. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Is there anyone speaking favor?
Madam President, we filed this case in October of last year. There have been no improvements, there are no permits to improve, and we're asking today
Okay. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move to abate. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our final public hearing is a resolution on abatement of nuisance on property at 2441 Fairview Road in District 7. Anthony Clark Hall being the last known owner, owner. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution?
Madam President, this most recent owner has only had the property a few months. Some of the work has begun. I'm gonna ask this case to be table for 30 days. Thank you.
All right. Okay, what is the pleasure of the council?
Madam President, I'm gonna change that and ask for a table for 14 days, and we'll see what kind of progress we get on it. We've had to look at this for quite a while. The neighbors have had to look at it. I've had to bear the burden of getting the calls for it. So I think in 14 days, if he hadn't shown some, then we'll revisit it.
Second.
Okay. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to table the resolution for 14 days, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to table for 14 days.
Our next item is accepting conveyance of property located on Ellis Avenue, Berry College, and company wish to donate this property to the city. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Our next resolution is agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment for the 2021 Summer Concert Series. And this is Dr. Tsar, amazing monster to perform at the Amphitheater on August 6, 2021, and the amount is $4,000. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Do we have a second? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
And our last item is op, resolution authorizing agreement with Crescent Moon Entertainment for the 2021 concert season. And this is for Pandora Box to perform at the Amphitheater on September 3, 2021, and the amount is $3,800. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
New business?
Madam President, I have one I'd like to bring. This is from the legal department, number 532, actually requested by the engineering department. This is a resolution awarding bid number 3442 for the Gadsden Sports Park, Phase 1 to Chase Building Group Incorporated. The amount budgeted is $6,447,642.52. I would ask for unanimous consent to consider.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent is granted.
I move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Councilman Beck, do you want to elaborate just a little bit?
Yes, ma'am. As we have talked before, this is the Gadsden Sports Park at Gadsden State Community College, a joint venture with our community college. This is our riverfront development that the mayor and Frankie Davis and our city has been working on for quite some time, and our city council. This is, to be noted, six, basically $6.5 million for Phase 1. This money, we have on hand. We are not borrowing any money to, to do Phase 1. This has been in the plans, I think, for quite some time, so we've smartly kept money back and had it so we can do this. Specifically, the construction bid will include the first phase, which includes three NCAA multi-use fields, two auxiliary buildings, recreational trails, substantial parking facilities, and competition-grade sports lighting. There's a lot of site work, as Heath Williamson, our city engineer, described in our pre-council meeting. There's a lot of dirt work and a lot of site work that has to be done. Once this is completed, it will also allow future phases to be done a little faster and a lot more smoother, because those, those items will be, will be already taken, taken care of. You know, this is part of the quality of life. We've heard for decades about developing our river and use our river. Any, every city would just love to have a river in the middle of their town. Well, this is part of that vision. This is part of what the city's doing to bring competition, sports competition to Gadsden, also for the quality of life for our local residents. Our son is 35 years old. He started playing soccer on those fields, and he was four years old, so I believe that's 31 years ago. And those fields have not changed very much since then. And so we would go and travel and go to other cities that had really nice facilities, and it would make you feel bad when you would go to those facilities, make you feel even worse when you invite them to come play on your facilities, on your field. So this is going to go a long, long way in providing a long overdue upgrade for the city of Gadsden in, in those areas. And so, you know, and it's not to be lost on the partnership with Gadsden State Community College, and what that's gonna do for, not only for the city, but for the community college. There'll be a lot more traffic over there, a lot of people coming from out of town, and they'll see our local community college, which is a great partner for our city and our, and our county. So all in all, I think this is a very good idea, very good expenditure of, of city funds to improve the quality of life here in Gadsden. One of the things I asked Heath Williamson was the walking trail, and there's gonna be a trail, essentially, Heath, correct me if I'm wrong, but around the entire perimeter of the park. I think you equated some of it, much like the, at Marana Park, where the concrete trail, there's gonna be some of that. Then also trails, maybe like the Black Creek Trails up at Nakalula Falls, where people can walk, and there'll be lighting and full view of the park. If you want to expand on that, that would be, that'd be good to do that, too.
Yes, sir. So initially, this Phase 1 does include a concrete sidewalk trail around the northern end. It's around an existing pond. That area will have pedestrian lighting, some landscape involved with it. In the long term, once we get into some of the future phases, we're looking at more of a Black Creek Trail-type facility that will surround the full exterior. So that part's not quite coming yet, but the concrete section is in this actual bid that's awarded today. So that will be there.
Thank you so much.
Okay. At this time, we'll have department reports. I think Parks and Recreation have a report.
Hello, everyone. I am gonna start off with a message from Ray with the Gadsden Museum of Arts. We are today helping assess the Edwall Leadership Group, and he is, he is doing his part right now, and I do this afternoon. But he said he was sorry you couldn't be here in person, but he would like to update everybody on the mural, and that it is finished here on Broad Street. And he wants to thank artist Ali Ball. And the letters of the mural features images from Gadsden's past, such as John Riley, the first settler of what is now Gadsden, to the city's presence, the new botanical garden at Nakalua Falls. I love the mural. It's a great addition to, to this area, and seen a lot of Facebook trends on that. So I'm proud of, of his work and everything that he does. So with Parks and Recreation, I did want to come and give a little update on what we've working on and what we have coming up. Our big event this week is the Bassmasters Central Open Tournament. I don't know if y'all have noticed, all the anglers in town, they are already pre-fishing. They've been pre-fishing probably about five to six days from now. We will have the check-in, and they will do a virtual meeting with their anglers, starting on Wednesday evening, and then they'll be blasting off Thursday morning. So with Bassmasters, the anglers represent 26 different states, plus Japan and South Africa. The co-anglers represent 23 states, plus Japan. So we have people legit from all over the world coming here to Gadsden to fish nearly Henry. We are excited about that. We have a total of 172 boats here in town that will be out on the waters Thursday and Friday. If no weather, if the weather is not bad and they're able to fish full days, then they will drop down on Saturday to 10 anglers. They will also be doing the weigh-ins virtually, so please go to bassmasters.com to watch the weigh-ins every afternoon. With that going on, a few other things we have happening at Parks and Recreation. We have the USA Softball this weekend at our sports complex. We're hosting the American Blood Drive at the Downtown Civic Center. Characters are hosting a play at the Amphitheater. We have multiple rentals in all of our rental facilities, all doing this adhering to the COVID guidelines. We are at half-capacity at all of our inside rentals and following athletic guidelines out the complex. Nakalua Falls is still open, the park and mini-golf, so come visit us, but remember your mask. We do have a full campground. It is perfect camping weather. We do appreciate y'all approving our summer concerts, moving those from this year that we missed to next year's, is what those two resolutions were for. Youth basketball registration is now open online. We are taking all registration online. Parents can go there. They can still notate what coach their child will be playing for, and if they do, are not identified with a coach, they can just register, and we'll place them on a team. We are accepting applications for coaches, and they are needing to go ahead and get that in, so they can do their coaches' training and their background screenings. We're working on plans for opening Christmas at the Falls. Staff has been working since the end of August, since we are short-staffed, putting on the lights. We have started our plans and on how to open that with the regulations that we're up under right now. We'll be releasing these plans very soon, so that the public will know what to do, when they want to visit Christmas at the Falls this season. We have, we plan to open pause on the Falls November 24, and then the full event is opening on Thanksgiving night, November 26, with Santa still arriving on Friday night, November 27. This is planned to run to January 2 of 2021. So we just got a few things happening in Gadsden, not too much, though.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We have two citizen requests. We have Smiley Webb. If you'll come to the podium, give your name and address, and.
Smiley Webb, I live at 6th Door, 6th Door, 28th Street in Gadsden, Alabama. Thank you, Madam President, and the board. All right, all my issue would be on the making Gadsden great, or trying to. And on far as the homeless, wherever I live at, where the library is, I've been putting out garbage bags on the pole, and I have been training them on how to clean up after theirself. It's, it's been an up and down situation, but, you know, I told them, I say, you know, if you don't clean up after yourself, you're not gonna get no respect. And what they're saying is that they feel that Gadsden owes them, owes them a living. I've had several of them sit there and say, you know, we should be respected better than what they're getting respected. But they, but it is, they brought this on theirself. I mean, that's my view. And, and they, but it was the holidays coming up, and what my mother showed me in the paper, I was really disappointed on the council of the Christmas parade. Because when you take that away from you, you're taking, you're taking, all the little kids out there, you're taking their dream away from them. I mean, Gadsden is slowly going down. And when I heard that guy about the MA and everything, and my motto is on this, and you can call me crazy if you want to, but I think it's a hoax.
I'm gonna go ahead and call you crazy.
Because you look, because you look at China. You look at the other states and everything. I mean, you know, you gotta sit back and look at the picture. Sit back and look at the picture, and seeing how, and all these, all these gathers, okay, the car show, had car show, all right, Nakalua Falls had their powwow, their radio dance, all these gatherings is going on. So why not, why not let the Christmas parade go on? It's the same thing. It's a gathering. It's a gathering. But don't take it, don't take, don't, don't take it out on the kids. Don't take it out on the kids. Don't, don't take their Christmas away from them. And as far as trick-or-treating and everything, like Johnny Cannon's drive-by, I agree with that, a drive-by, you know? But, I mean, you, you, the world as we know it may not be here very much longer.
I'll answer you about the Christmas parade. I'll answer you about the Christmas parade. The city of Gadsden does not host the Christmas parade. You know, they use the streets and everything, but this is the Kiwanis who host the Christmas parade. So we're, so that, so that can go out on social media, Facebook, Instagram, email. So we're, so that, so that can go out on social media, Facebook, Instagram, um, email that the city of Gadsden does not host the Christmas parade, uh, at this time.
I agree with them counseling it, though. I want to get that on the record. I want to agree with them counseling it. I want to get that on the record, counseling the Christmas parade. I do agree with it because we're going to listen to the, uh, doctors. We're not going to listen to the politicians.
Uh, at this time, we'll have, uh, Michael Wilson.
You know what, just a minute. I'm, I'm sort of offended that you would come up here and say this was a hoax. I know of a family that had three people that died and several other people that died from this coronavirus. And you're going to come in here and say this is a hoax? What is, that's your opinion, but I'm going to let you know, you're wrong.
Well, that's what I've heard on, through the TV.
You, what you heard?
Were, were...
Uh, we're not going to get in a, we're not going to get in a debate.
Thank you.
Michael Wilson and Joan, Jones, Edwah Free Clinic.
Hey, good morning. Um, thank y'all so much for, uh, for having us on your agenda today. Uh, we are with the Edwah County Free Clinic, and, um, we think it's a very important time to raise awareness for the clinic and our mission to provide quality health care to Edwah County residents that are uninsured and cannot afford care otherwise. So I'd like to quickly break down our operations and update the council on what we are doing in 2020. It certainly is a challenging year, so. Firstly, you know, what the free clinic is and who we serve. We are a primary care clinic for uninsured residents of Edwah County, and we've been in operation for almost 20 years. Currently, we have about 150 active patients, and, and we see about 80 to 90 of those a month. Uh, we offer primary care visits, uh, counseling and medication maintenance. In addition to the doctor's visits, we provide, um, uh, medicine and free prescriptions from our office. It doesn't help if you go see the doctor and then you can't get your prescriptions. Some of the different medicines that we, that we give to our patients, uh, we have prescriptions for, uh, for heart-related issues, cholesterol, diabetes, antibiotics, respiratory drugs, insulin, and on and on. Uh, if we see a patient and they, uh, have a need that, that we can't provide at that time, we work on, uh, you know, we've got some different, uh, programs with drug companies that, that we work, and we try and source those drugs and, and get them their prescriptions for that. As far as how many prescriptions, um, we, we have some numbers that we've put together, um, from a retail cost perspective, and, and so we provide about $10,000 a month of, uh, regular prescriptions, and then another $20,000 a month in program drugs, which are, which are drugs that we petition and are donated, um, from, you know, major drug companies. Uh, we don't, uh, charge the patient for anything. It's right there in our name. Uh, we're funded through grants, charities, individual donations, and some fundraising that we do. Um, and how we, how we do all this, we have, um, we have two, uh, part-time employees. We have, we have Joan, we have Lars Leesak, and then everything else is volunteers. Uh, we have seven, uh, right now, we've got about seven doctors who are volunteering, uh, their time dur, throughout the month. In a normal year, we'd have up to, you know, 10 citizen volunteers that just help with staff and office stuff. Uh, right now, we've got about five who are coming in and helping. And then another thing that we do that people don't know is we, uh, we have, uh, medical students and nursing students that rotate through the clinic, uh, on a monthly basis. So, uh, I guess the other thing that we'd like to, you know, as far as the future of the clinic, uh, you know, we want to continue with the medication maintenance, grow in our patient base, uh, and we're also working to, uh, provide some dental services, uh, from our clinic. So, thank you very much. That's, that's our update.
I appreciate that because, uh, in fact, I had heard it and seen it on different, uh, I think in our community block, but nobody has ever come and said anything about the free clinic. So this is, and, and I'm quite sure that there are people out there that need medical...
Yep, absolutely.
That, uh, and some of them probably don't even know anything about the free clinic, even though it's been, we've said a little up here about it. But if you'll just come every so often, no problem, and just let, you know, so it can get out there that people who are eligible can come, and, uh, they don't have to go without their medicine, and they don't have to do without their medicine, because a lot of people, a lot of people do...
True, yeah, there's a, there's a big need for that.
Go without medicine because they don't have the money.
All right. Thank y'all so much for having us.
I wonder if we could get this on 99. Do, do we put this on 99? Y'all know? You too.
I don't think so.
I know you're asking, uh...
I don't think so.
Since Eric has, we are filling in just a little bit.
Yeah. We could, we could do that, can't we, Mayor?
We could try.
Yeah. Your list.
Thank, uh, thank, thank you so, thank you so much, and, uh, we'll just try to keep this in the forefront of, of people who, who are in need of it, you know? My, my real concern is that there are people out there who need medicine, and because medicine is, uh, pharmaceutical is high, then they do without, and then they go into their stages of sickness that they didn't have to because they didn't have the medicine. So, uh, this is something that we can spread, you know, this is a good thing to spread the word.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. At this time, we'll have, uh, comments, announcements. I don't know about this.
I'm gonna do it like a mouse.
I guess I should say it out loud, because maybe some of his constituents, I just said I may not let Councilman Worthy speak. Uh, but anyway, he said he just had an announcement. Mayor, if you have any comments, we'll start with you.
I, I really don't have anything. We've started off today.
All right. All right.
My announcement. Is it okay? We're going to talk about, uh, Thanksgiving. You know, they're not going to do the big Thanksgiving, uh, lunch over at, uh...
The venue.
The venue this year. But what, what they're going to do is do different, uh, feedings around the city. And so if you have a church that would like to get involved, contact them. Or you can contact me, because I have their names and numbers, but I'm not going to give their numbers out because they didn't give me permission. Matter of fact, they didn't even ask me to make this announcement, but I'm doing it anyway. But you can call me, and I'll get the information to them. It's 256-504-5049. And we're going to feed at the Carver Community Center on Thanksgiving Day. It's for drive-up. You can, you're not, nobody's coming inside the building. We'll be out there to give you a to-go plate. And hopefully, we'll also have, uh, volunteers that volunteer for the, uh, Thanksgiving dinner every year to, uh, maybe be able to deliver to your house. So hopefully, we'll have that. They're supposed to let me know that, uh, probably today or tomorrow, because I think they had a meeting yesterday about it. So, uh, we will be feeding from, uh, 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock at the Carver Community Center. You can drive up, uh, we may be able to deliver it to you. I'll give you more information about that. Or you can walk up, and we'll give you a to-go plate. Thank you.
All right. Councilman, uh, Wilson.
Um, I'd, just real quick, want to remind everybody immediately following this. We, the Human Relations Advisory Committee, um, has set up an interview. It's a Zoom webinar with Ron Hall Jr., who is the CEO of a, a major tier-one automotive manufacturer, and he's talking about some issues, um, in the automotive world surrounding minorities and businesses, and how you can implement policies that create equity in the workspace. Anyway, it's a great webinar. I think you can find a link to it on the, on the, um, public, uh, address announcement that was made for the meeting. So y'all check that out. Uh, the other thing, I just wanted to send my condolences and thoughts to, uh, Craig Enzer and, um, Kurt Vegetes, the owners of Little Bridge Marina, even though that's not in the city of Gadsden. Uh, for those of y'all who haven't heard, I think they suffered a, a total loss fire incident, um, at their restaurant. And obviously, uh, again, even though it's not in the city of Gadsden, they're our neighbors, and we wish them the best. It's never good to see a, a successful business suffer such a, a tragic incident. So I'm hoping the best for them and that, um, that they'll be able to bounce back their business pretty quick, but that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilman Reed.
Yeah, I'd like to, uh, very briefly cover something that's, uh, not very well taken around Gadsden except through the Humane Society and Animal Control. And that is the fact of mistreatment of animals. In the last two weeks, we've seen a small sampling of a driver pulling up to a four-way stop, putting a dog out and driving off. How you think the dog feels? Another one, that she pulled up to the four-way stop, put the dog out, put a sack of food out. Really nice of her to put the food out. What in the world these people are doing with a dog, I got no idea. Abuse of animals in the last two weeks, I've seen two cases. One was where a man beat a dog almost to death, broke his back legs, taken to the Humane Society and getting treatment. This morning, I was called by the neighbors that the man had done it again. But they're afraid to say anything because they're afraid of this guy. Well, he ain't done but a coward to start with. So let it sink in on animals that can't, they can't protect themselves, and somebody's beating on them. And the people who see it, Police Department, Animal Control, and the Humane Society. We have a tendency to sweep another rug because we really don't want to know about it. But I'm going to keep pushing it in the next two or three weeks. And I'm talking about chain dogs. We had one puppy that was probably 10 pounds, had a chain on him, trying to drag that thing around with no food and water. This is absolutely ridiculous, but we're going to start coming down on you folks. So the best thing you can do is turn the dog in, number one, leave it alone, and neighbors, please, turn them in. If you don't do anything but call me, 256-328-2958. Just call me. I'll turn them in. Thank you.
Councilman Beck.
Thank you, Madam President. That's sad news. Uh, Councilman Reed, I'm sorry to hear that. That is awful. I want to announce that at First Baptist Church, uh, Gadsden at the corner of Fifth and Walnut, we will have a food distribution tomorrow. Uh, it's going to start at 12 o'clock and go until the food is given out. We have a, a lot of food, so I encourage you to spread that word and let your friends and neighbors know if you know anybody that's in need of, uh, of, uh, food items. We're going to have plenty tomorrow. Uh, I want to thank the free clinic folks, uh, Joan and Michael and all the volunteers. Thank y'all for what you do. And, uh, you know, you mentioned 150 people that, that don't have insurance, and they have no way to get health care if you guys weren't there doing that. So thanks for what you do, and, and we'll do all we can, as President Towe's mentioned, to give you any publicity, any help that we can give. And, uh, we just appreciate that you, uh, care about your community enough to offer that and all the doctors, nurses, and all the volunteers that are there to help make that work. Uh, we've talked a little bit about COVID today, and you know, that's such a touchy subject. I mean, no matter what you say, you're going to make 50% of the people mad on one side or the other. Uh, you know, from what I can tell, it's not over. Nothing's really changed other than we're all just sick and tired of being sick and tired. I'm sick and tired of wearing these masks. Uh, I'm, I'm sick and tired of hearing people say they're sick and tired. I think we're all, all at that point. The point is, it's still here. If any of you've lost family members to cancer, I think you're probably sick and tired of cancer. Uh, I have. I'm, I'm sick and tired of cancer. It, it, me being sick and tired doesn't make it go away. Uh, we have to be smart, and we have to think of others, and we have to do the, do the right thing, which involves wearing a mask, social distancing, uh, staying home if you feel sick, and just thinking of others. Hearing the statistics this morning, and Jason, Councilman Wilson checked, I mean, it, it's over 65 years of age. I guess this is Edwah, I don't know if it's Edwah County or Alabama, but 77% of, was it, people die if they get it, if they're over that age?
Seventy-seven.
Just to clarify, 77% of all the deaths in the state of Alabama have been individuals over 65 years old. Whereas 24 to 49-year-olds, who represent 40% of the people getting, on, only represent 4% of the deaths. Whereas if you're 65 or older, that's 77% of all the deaths in Alabama have been 65 and older.
It's just an astounding statistic. Thanks for clearing that up. Uh, you know, think of others. Think of people, obviously, people over 65. I've, I've known people under the age of 40 that have it, and they're fine, but what about people that aren't that age? So, I mean, it's just, you know, do unto others as you would have them do unto you, and this would all be a, a much better world. And then last but not least, uh, the back to the sports park. I want to thank the mayor. I want to thank Frankie and Lisa. Uh, you know, the money for that, that's a lot of money, six and a half million dollars. The city receives money from sales tax and, and things, and it's already through legislation can only be, some monies can only be spent on certain projects and on certain capital-type projects. So this money is obviously coming from those pockets of money that the city has, and that's what it was designated for, was to invest in our city and to improve our quality of life, and at the same time, to bring revenue back into our city. And I think this is going to complicate it. It's going to take our river. It's going to turn it, over a period of years, will turn our riverfront into a much different place, and it's all going to be for the betterment of our local citizens and, and taxpayers. So, uh, before you have an opinion about it, maybe make, can go and look and see what it's going to be before, uh, before you might not think it's a good idea. This has been thought about for a long period of time. It's not something that just came about in a matter of minutes. So excited about the future of Gads and Nakalula Falls is looking great. Thanks to everybody that, that has a hand in, in that program as well. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, I call for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.